February 8th, 2022. This is the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of New Canaan. Eight thirty-three AM. This is a hybrid meeting. We have anybody on by?
Press, Steve Brown.
You have any presenters? Okay, first item on the agenda. We're not going to amend the agenda for that other items. Not ready yet. So minutes of the prior meetings, January twenty-fifth to January twenty-seventh, and a special meeting on January thirty-one on our tablets. Any comments and corrections on the minutes?
None here.
None.
Then I guess we accept them as presented. So all the comments, members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics to schedule for review and revoke. Comments may be submitted electronically. No one present from the public here. You're not the public today, Gene. Rita? But anyway, if anyone wants to submit comments, they may be submitted to the email address b o s distribution@newcanadct.gov and we'll read them before the end of the meeting. I see no comments otherwise, so that we'll go into the ice rink agreement. I guess that's why Gene and Rita. You want to come up and present this or at least answer questions? There's an ice rink agreement on our tablets. Why don't you just tell us the status of the ice rink? It looks like it's almost ready.
It is almost ready. Why do you say that almost?
Does it have ice or water?
It, well, water will be brought in by trucks when needed. We weren't able to work out an agreement to hook in the fire hydrant. Perhaps next year we can do that. Right now, the, if you recall about almost two years ago, when I came here, it was asked if the chiller had a warranty. It does not have warranty, which is not to be, which is to be expected considering its age. But it turns out that there is a panel which is, needs to be replaced. And without that,
There's what?
Control panel, electrical panel, control panel, like a motherboard type of a thing. So we've ordered that and when that comes, we can then turn the chiller on properly in terms of glycol is loaded. Cooler pads are all full of glycol. We need that panel to turn on the chiller and make ice, which we're hoping to have, but have very early in a day or two.
In a day or two.
We hope. It's a sourcing kind of a thing. You have to find this panel, which supposedly has been found. So that would happen. And then in about three days later, we would have ice and then we can proceed. But we are at the mercy of that panel and weather. If we have another snowstorm, it's not predicted right now, but they happen, et cetera. So that's our general status. We're all set. We have staff people lined up. They'll be there in training this week. We just had an insurance meeting going over the insurance requirements in terms of safety protocols and procedures yesterday. So we're set up to move forward, but we still have a few hurdles left.
And how long will the season go once we get?
Usually the end in very early March. You can extend it. The, you are then fighting the weather as it gets warmer. It's harder to make the ice. You can make ice, but it won't be of the quality you would want, safety, et cetera. So that's another weather dependent item. It'll be shocking if it went past March fifteenth, for instance, due to weather. So we're going to have a very short season.
Any questions?
I mean, this is wonderful, right? When I came into the Board of Selectmen ten years ago, whatever it was, one of the things that I looked at were the special projects funds. And there were a lot of them. And one of the funds was the ice rink fund, which had, I don't remember, was twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand.
Ten thousand.
Ten, ten, the ten thousand inflation. And I remember questioning our CFO at that time as to, you know, what is this? And then she reminded me that it was a project that Tom O'Day had, in large part, can single-handedly had spearheaded, even though he didn't have kids who played hockey. And, you know, it was, at that time, it was an idea that was kind of grandiose. We were going to have a building, right? That was the thought. This is terrific. You know, having an ice rink at Waveney, you put it up, you take it down during the winter. You know, you're not having a full-time facility with all the costs and, you know, associated issues with that. So thank you folks for pushing this forward. This is, this is great. Couple of questions. The, the hours, is it eight to eleven?
During Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we'd like to be open from noon to eight. I'm sorry, noon to six weekday. And then on Friday and Saturday, typically noon to eight or nine, we'll see. And on Sunday, sorry, Saturday, we'd be about ten to eight and Sunday noon to eight.
Because I thought I saw eight to eleven PM. Was that in the agreement?
I think that might have been put in there. That's not our intent
Right.
to do that. These are hours for this season, our first season. Then when we get a feel for the community reaction and response, and when people want to come, we could change those hours and hopefully expand them. But we don't, I don't think we want to go to eleven o'clock.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't think so.
Less than expanded.
Sure, sure, sure. Are there P and Z?
There are P and Z rules. I think ten o'clock is basically the end time.
Right. And no hockey pucks initially?
Certainly not this year. That might be, but it's not an NHL sized rink, so you cannot have regular full-sized varsity style hockey. This rink is big enough for pee-wee hockey, but to go to pucks, you need safety nets and or glass around there and other procedures, which we don't have in place. So at this point in time, we have no plans to do hockey. With this size, we have no plans to do what you might call NHL hockey or varsity hockey.
Right.
There are opportunities for the girls and boys varsity hockey team to do some practice at the rink. It's convenient, obviously. It's close by. They could do practice skirmishes, et cetera. If it involved puck, we would have to implement safety procedures and actual equipment, such again as glass barriers, nets to prevent pucks from flying out of the rink and injuring people.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, the contract is pretty expansive in terms of the usage, which is fine, because we can, as a town, cut it back as we see fit, I think.
Right. But again, no hockey this season whatsoever, no pucks at all, even for practice.
And in terms of usage, is that going to be the exclusive determination, parks and rec?
The contract deals with that issue, and I believe that it's, it's the NC rinks call, but we do have, for instance, understanding with parks and recs that it won't be pucks, et cetera. We cannot have private parties. I believe that's our call. I'd have to review the documents rather recent. Maybe, Kevin, did you recall that section?
I read it once, but I don't recall.
Same here. We did model it after the PAL rink thing, but in that section, we did make some changes that their relationship with their park and rec has been on and off.
Right. Right. And thin ice or whatever the management company is, how many employee, you were talking about staffing. Is that?
That's, that is, that would be staff that we will hire. We're hiring.
Okay.
Thin ice.
We being NC rink?
NC rink. The thin ice is basically, their role is basically to construct and deconstruct or take down the rink. And also to provide us some technical managerial consulting services. The fellow who runs that runs the PAL rink. That's twenty years experience in running rinks as well as putting them up and taking them down. So he has lots of practical experience.
So they're going to really just take, put it up and take it down and NC?
Is going to operate.
He's going to operate. How many employees do you?
We will have three employees most likely. There'll be one, somebody part-time, full-time.
And thanks to?
Full-time, by the way, only for the season.
Right, right. And thanks to our former Senator, terrific Senator, Tony Boucher. Are we going to have signage to recognize the Boucher family?
Yes, we will. And Rita could speak to that extensively, as well as signage for other people who have helped out. Cam Sandy Lecter has been very helpful. Arnold Karp has been helpful getting stoned us there. We have other people who have helped out. M L Builders has helped out, et cetera.
We've donated all of the materials that we needed to build the ramp, which was fantastic.
And they will all get signage.
We were trying to get local participation and they stepped up and we're happy to help.
That's terrific.
Yeah. And so we're going to be acknowledging that with sponsor banners and also with the Tony Boucher Community Rank banner that will go around the rink. And we, we understand that that needs to come down every night. And so we're trying to create banners that can, can be, you know, brought in and taken down.
And to be clear, you're, you're going to continue to fundraise going forward for to operating expenses and such?
Yeah. And some of the, some of the money we raised this year, you know, went toward things that will, that, you know, are some like costs, capital costs or the, you know, the boards. So we did raise quite a bit of money, but that went toward a lot of costs that we would have to, that we will be benefited by later on as well. But we do need to fundraise. We'll have to fundraise every year to actually operate the facility. And then we'll find out how much money we can take in with ticketing. We don't anticipate that that will cover the total costs. So we will have to continue to fundraise. And this is a great way, even though it's an abbreviated season, it was, it's a great drive run to understand what was involved and what we needed to do. And it's going to, you know, let us know what the demand is really and what the reaction is from the public. So it's a very valuable time period, even if it's not as long as we had hoped.
Let the word go forth.
Tell all your friends.
And a little plug, we're also going to fundraise because we want to put a skate shop in this year. Just to be clear, our initial goal was to have a skate shop and it still is.
A rental facility.
Well, I called the skate shop. We sharpen skates as well, but yes, a rental facility. So people can walk in and say, hey, this is neat. Walking through Waveney, this is neat. I'd like to go skating. Can I go?
It's like Rock Center, right? You just want to see, yeah, sure. This is terrific. This is, this is just terrific. So thank you for your efforts.
That will be here. So hopefully let the word not go out that there is a rental shop there.
Next season.
Next season, yes.
Thank you.
I think Tom O'Day wants to say something. He's got to stand right there. Oh, there you.
Hey, everybody. Sorry I couldn't be there, but I just want to thank, thank the selectmen for your, all of your support. Yes, we, actually, Nick, you're right. We did at one point in time have between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars in that account. But we had bought surveys. We had tried to put the full-time indoor facility back below near where the mulch pie was, then it moved down below the softball field. So with a lot of effort, we've gotten there. And just to, Gene, I spoke with Tony, the, the panel is in, they're putting it in today. The only thing holding us up now at this point is weather. So we were hoping for no snow. Now we're hoping for cold weather. So we need about four, three or four days of cold weather and we can get going. So anyway, thank you, everybody. Really appreciate all the efforts to get to where we are. And if you know of anybody that wants to sponsor our Zamboni, we need that sponsorship going forward.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Does Tom know about the control panel?
And I want to publicly retract my joking statement over the years of the Tom O'Day Memorial Ice Rink. It has come to fruition and thank you, Tom, for, for, you know, continuing to fight the fight and getting this done. This is, this is just fabulous. So thank you personally.
Well, thank you very much, but it was Gene that got us going again and Rita and Kara and Sarah and Pavla, a lot of, a lot of people got us over the finish line. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
That's great. Just want to echo my thanks to all of you. This is very exciting. Just a couple of questions and just to follow up. So the skate shop, is that in a physical structured building or are you going to set that up as a truck or how's that work?
That would be in, well, in, most likely inside what we call a hospitality tent.
A tent.
Which will have our office, if you will, office staff, one large tent, smaller this year than anticipated for the oncoming years. It'll have this, the skate rentals, the skate sharpener, the office and a place for families to sit down, get out of the cold weather and keep their boots on, by the way, because we will have padding so they can go from the hospitality tent right to the rink. So to go on and off, they won't have to change in and out of their skates. But that's typically one large tent.
Great. Okay. And, and, right.
Not permanent. Nothing is permanent, except the upgraded transformer that's there and the chiller that is there on a pad.
And your reference to the hour is some of which going till eight or nine. It's so after dark. Are there lights around the rink?
There are, will be lights around the rink. Again, they will not, they're not permanent.
Right. They're part of the whole structure that are taken down at the end. Okay.
Well, they're probably independent lights that are there, kind of like you have the hockey, the soccer games in the evening in the fields. That's an element. We could go a number of different ways and this will be part of seeing how one approach works.
Great. And can you remind us also where all that equipment is then stored over the, the spring and summer seasons before they're?
Back, back in the truck, most of it, in the trailer.
Near the, we had stored it next to the carriage barn. Next to the carriage barn. Yeah. Okay. Okay. And that's, so they, the, I guess a thin ice, if that's your contractor, they take it down, they put it in the trailer and it stays there until the next setup.
Next season.
And when do you think the next season would start?
Typically, you want to start opening up the rink physically in early November and the opening time is typically the first weekend right after Thanksgiving, which is an ideal. This is standard in the business pretty much.
Right.
And it runs through the end of February, weather dependent. Again, if you have cold weather, you can extend it a little bit. If you have warm weather, you close it down a little bit earlier.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And congratulations when it's officially done.
Thank you for your support.
My pleasure.
I too would like to thank Tom and Gene in particular. I mean, you've been working on this for a long, long time. And everyone who worked on it, Jake Reno and others from the Parks and Rec and Joe Segrensky and Tiger and John House team. So it's been quite a team effort. And so I guess with that, we're approving a contract. And it's Parks and Rec, actually it's coming from Public Works because it's a parks matter, so that I move, we approve the agreement with NC Rink Inc. to utilize property at Waveney Park for an outdoor public skating rink. The agreements on our tablets.
I happily second.
For the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck. May it get cold.
Yeah.
But not snow.
Cold but not snow, yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Osman.
Good morning, everybody.
A little warmer out there today.
Is it? Yeah.
Is this for heater or air conditioning or both?
Yeah. So as part of the new agreement like last month, a person policy, I have to come to you folks, anything over ten thousand, which was going to exceed ten thousand. So we're looking to increase the, the, make Armelas or purchase by fifty thousand dollars to continue moving forward with repair service. And spring and summer is coming up for air conditioning too. Gee, as you know, we've been struggling with a lot of material supply chain and labor. And Garmel is done a little bit more work for me because I had some problems with another company was doing some other work. So there's a crossover there. So I was able to get them to cover some additional services that they didn't do in the past. They were able to do for me. They've been great. They've been coming in when I call them. It's a challenge these days. Any questions?
Question.
On here. So it's both the service and the supply then too. Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah, this is why, my call them up to comment, it's labor materials, it covers whatever has to be done to get something up and running.
Right. Great.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to increase the current link and purchase order with M A Garmella in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for building HVAC repair services as described by Bill. Second?
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. I see Ahmad here. Ahmad. How many years have you been doing this?
You know, should be more. I'm glad to know that you all know Ahmad. Hopefully you've all been down to Meat Park and experienced Waveney Pool and other places. So we are here just to ask you to renew the lease once again. We've looked it over. We had help from Tom Stadler who helped craft it in the past. And it's fairly standard. Ahmad is definitely noticing some challenges this year with supply chain issues and hiring staff and that kind of thing. So we're trying to get this in place for him so that he's got a solid foundation from which to go out and recruit people to join his staff and hopefully secure the supplies that you need, right? So we've reviewed this and it meets Ahmad's approval and we've had legal review it. So we just ask that you would all allow us to proceed.
Just one, any changes from the last contract?
Just the, we, we added the five-year term and then, whoops, there was nothing really significant. It was more, the fees changed.
Right.
We had held his fee flat during the last few years, but we've now incorporated a four hundred dollar increase each year. Thirty days. Originally it had been ten days if there was any default, but we changed that to thirty days. Don't expect that to happen. Let's take one.
None here.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Great relationship.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to work with you guys again.
I move, we approve this agreement with the Apple Cart Food Company. Ahmad Aziz owner to operate the food concessions at Meat Park and Waveney Pool for an additional five years per the agreement on our tablets. Or second?
Second.
As for the discussion, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
Hopefully it's going to be a warm summer.
Good morning.
Mr. Tom Stadler.
How are you?
Chairman of the Family Fourth Committee.
Correct. For the third time, we will try to have the forty-first annual Family Fourth. We hope it's going to work this time. We're here just to approve the contract with the fireworks company. It really hasn't gone up much over the years. I think all the time I've been on the committee, hasn't, they haven't raised the price at all. We asked that they increase it one year to have a bigger show, but, so it's going up a little bit this year from thirty to thirty-two thousand. Actually, the money's in the bank already. We sold tickets last year. And all those folks will be able to come in this year on that pass that they bought last year and we'll sell some additional ones too. So we're asking for approval of the fireworks contract for, I believe it's thirty-two thousand, so that we're.
It's entirely out of the family fund.
Entirely. Everything is paid entirely out of that fund. We reimburse the town for the, you know, the police overtime and the, and the fire and the public works and the parks people and everything, everything, porta potties, all that.
Is insurance covered in that as well?
Yeah.
And then we're also only going to have one rain date.
Two, two rain dates.
Two rain.
Two rain. Well, the, the committee voted unanimously to have it on the second of July, which is Saturday night, rather than a Monday night. Just for, you know, it just works better for.
Is it rain dates or COVID variant dates?
We're covered for both in the contract. COVID is an automatic out.
Yeah.
And we have a little cost if, if there's a rain delay, but the date is the second, which is a Saturday. The first rain date is Sunday, the third. And the alternate rain date is the ninth. And then that's it. We're done. Last year we tried to place it. And it gets very, very difficult because the crew that sets off the fireworks, they have day jobs. And they want to do all this on weekends and holidays. They don't want to do it on a Tuesday night or a Wednesday night or a Monday night even. It's just hard to get them.
Ever again. So what? Never again. Try to do it in August.
That was impossible with all the weddings and then the weather and everything.
And it's just, you know, it's too late. It's, you kind of miss the.
Well, and then the suggestion was we can do it, you know, on Columbus Day and Labor Day and wherever else, Halloween. So.
Any further questions?
You know, Tommy, thank you for your efforts and over the past two years to try and get, you know, the fireworks lit off, but it's, it's.
It's a challenge. I appreciate, I really appreciate that because right now we're working on food trucks already.
Right.
Believe it or not, for July. And three or four I've contacted who have come in the past have all said, no, we're, we're not going to like to truck up this year. We're not going to do it this year until things settle down. And then you have to go find three or four more trucks and, you know.
Sorry, why aren't they interested in coming?
They've just shut their truck down. They're, they're, they're not going to operate a food truck this year.
Oh, I see.
It's not going to do it. And some have just decided to go out of business. Others are going to take a year off and not do it. And then there's those that call you on the fourth of July at two o'clock in the afternoon and say, I can't make it. So they come at you every which way.
So for ten years, you've come before this body, including when you were, you know.
Sitting back there.
Talking about, asking about music, perhaps having music.
Going to ask it again. I want music during the fireworks.
Every year.
I can't get any traction on that. I've tried because you bring it up every year. And I, you know, it's an idea. If you look at Macy's or someone else, they'll, they'll have music during the fireworks.
The Boston, you know, the, the.
Band to me that would be willing to do that and choreograph that to the fireworks?
The band? No, I don't think it would be the town band. I would think it would be, no.
If you can come up with a band that would be willing to do that, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I think, I think, I think you have to do, you know, canned music and pay for it. Yeah.
Yeah, but you want to, you kind of want to choreograph it.
Absolutely. It absolutely demands that somebody sits down and timing and, you know, you get to work with the fireworks.
I do have others that would suggest that would destroy the, the evening.
I get it.
Because they want to hear the fireworks and the fizzle and the boom, 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 and don't want to hear music then. That should be before and it shouldn't be during. So you get, you get both sides.
I disagree, but that's okay. As, as a musician.
As a member of the Chamber Music Board, so. Maybe I can get Andy to come play in the end of that night.
How do you notify those who have already purchased tickets from?
We're in the process of that. We're meeting right after this with John Howe and Tucker, and we're going to talk about that. How do we get that word out? And then, you know, how do we go about selling tickets this year and how many can we sell? How many people are going to come? Do we have to ask them to notify us? Because there is, there is a parking limit there. There's, there's a limit. And in one year, we had to stop and shut off the inflow because there was no more parking.
So to those that we've already sold a ticket last, previous years, do they actually have a physical hard copy that they have to show or you send them a new one or how does that work?
That's what we're going to work out because a lot of the people already have called and said, we, we can't find it. We've lost them. You know, we, the dog ate it.
Right.
You know, that's what we're going to work out, whether they can, we have their names, we have their addresses. Unfortunately, we don't have their email addresses. Tucker?
Yeah, we have lists.
We have lists.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else on the fourth? We, I mean, there's challenges. The, the kids playground area, the bouncy houses and all that, that guy's gone out of business. COVID just killed him. So now we've got to rethink that. What do we get? Do we get people to paint faces and clowns and magicians or, you know, what, what are we going to do? And can we get those kind of people to come? It's a challenge.
For the questions, I move, we approve the requests from Recreation Department to enter into a contract with International Fireworks Manufacturing for the Family Fourth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second year.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I will be adjourned now too.
Can I just make a comment? For the first time during your rain, as per selectmen, I noticed that the agenda does not contain
Selectment comments.
Selectment comments.
The second or third time or fourth time.
With the?
Yeah.
Any particular reason that?
Yeah, it wasn't productive.
Our comments are not productive?
Again, if you want to talk, you know, go ahead and talk about it.
I'm sorry, what?
If you want to talk, talk.
Okay. On receipt, as we all are, of a email from the Police Commission, I said, the New Canaan Police Commission wishes to advise the town bodies addressed above that we unanimously recommend that New Canaan Police Headquarters Building remain at one seventy-four South Avenue. It is also the opinion of the commission that more detailed plans, cost analysis and expert advice should be sought before determining if renovating as new or building new in the current location is the most prudent solution. In addition, in addition, both the renovate as new and the build new plans must include a training facility. In addition, in addition, both the renovate as new and the build new plans must include a training facility that is attached to or adjacent to the police building. We believe that it would be helpful to all the decision-making town bodies that we are invited to future meetings during which the New Canaan Police Headquarters Building will be discussed, working together. We are confident that this project will be successfully completed. Thank you for your time and service to our town. And that was a memorandum sent to Board of Finance, Town Council and us. And so my question for you, Kev, is, is, you know, where are we with this process? As I've indicated earlier, I think it's imperative that we move expeditiously to get our PD and new building. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's worthfully needed. You know, we've got a number of female officers. They don't have their own locker room. It's outdated. It's dark. It's dank. We, we need to move forward. Interest rates are going up. Bonding rates, part of that process and Kathleen can speak to this better than I can. But I, I just think we need to, to move. It's 2022. We need to get moving forward on this issue. So that's my selectmen comment.
I move, we adjourn.
Just, did you want to respond or?
You know, I, we don't have time today to talk about police because we have six or eight other priorities to get a budget adopted by the Board of Finance tonight. I spent time on this in January with a, an alternative that people came forward with. I mean.
The alternative being to put it in Wavine, Wavine Park, right? Or contiguous property owned by the town, contiguous to Wavine Park, is that correct?
We had an owner downtown purchase for the building. We investigated it. We spent time, eight to 10 hours, you know? This process is very deliberate and we've, we've got a lot more work to do. As, as the memo says, we got a lot more advice to get before we make a decision on this. And the Board of Finance has no, no time in February to.
No, according to, well, based upon my discussions with the chairman of the Board of Finance, this is important to him.
It's important to me.
To the Board of Finance.
Well, we've got six or eight other priorities. Wavine House, Playhouse. We got so many issues that, you know, just, just getting a budget done.
In this, in this day of age, with, with the issues we have with crime in this town, in this, in this country, I think this is important. I think this is a priority.
It's absolutely a priority. We have six other priorities before we can get to it in March.
Well, then, then if you've got six or eight other things before, it's not a priority by definition.
Playhouse. Wavine House. We got a lot of work to do in February and.
Agreed. There are a lot of things going on.
And other distractions. So, you know, when, when we have the time in March, we will get back to it.
Okay. So is that the, the new date? So March will.
Yeah, we have.
So it'll become a priority in March?
Time in February too. We have no time in February for the Board of Finance to address this. We have so much work to do on the budget. Right? So.
This is part of the budget because it's, it's, you know.
It's an important budget. We, we, it's not acceptable right now.
What's not acceptable?
The budget. Six and a half percent. It's not acceptable.
Okay.
But again, I, you know, we, we don't have time to discuss it today. I'm amused by the memo, so.
You're amused? Why are you amused?
Anyway.
This is from your, our, our Police Commission that we have selected. So are you?
They've invested like six hours into it and I've invested a hundred bucks over the last year or so. Anyway.
So I, I would just echo, I'd like to see that among the many priorities, but probably at the top of the priorities list if we could. And whenever the time is appropriate, if that's two weeks away, when we're close to two weeks away, when we're into the new month, I think that, that we should bring that up again if that timing works. And then lastly, just selectmen's comments, just going forward, should we assume that they're going to stay as part of our agenda item or are they being removed permanently?
Permanently. I mean, it was abused. So let's, let's, let's just, during the meeting, I think we've covered it today until other matters resolved. So I move, we adjourn at 9:08.
So going forward, since there's not the opportunity for a selectmen, of course we can talk. I'm, I'm a member of this board. I can talk when I want to talk. But if we want to bring issues to the forefront, we just do it by motion.
You know, talk about putting things on the agenda. So.
I'd just like to make a motion that we keep selectmen's comments on the agendas going.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Okay. I move, we adjourn at 9:08. Second?
Second.